Well, welcome. Tonight, getting near that time of year where we all surprise ourselves. And you find out that the budget is not as small as we would like it. It's amazing time of year. I mean, we're going to talk about spending $131 million this year. There's always joke, that kind of money could have bought Milford when we were kids. They would have thrown in Hope Dale and Mendon. But today, that's what we're going to go through. Why don't we start with introductions?
Sure, I'm Brent Hornberger, Vice Chair of the Finance Committee. And really happy to be here tonight to spend some time talking about the warrant articles. And for any town meeting members that hasn't had the time to go through it like we have, we're here to try to bring some transparency to it.
And I'm Tom Loughlin. I'm the Chairman of the Select Board. And Mr. Chairman, or see Al, because you're not Mr. Chairman here this evening. But I just want to clarify some historical perspectives on your previous statement that it was Mendon that divided to Hope Dale, and it was Hope Dale...
Yeah, we were suburb of Mendon.
And it was Hope Dale that gave us Milford, okay? So Mendon is actually the center of 15 to 17 communities around us. A lot of people don't know that that's the father tree, or the patriarch.
Somebody once brought up that we were a suburb of Mendon at one time.
Well, we are. But we were a subdivision from Hope Dale. Hope Dale allowed us to come this way. Some people say that's why the horse faces in certain directions.
Really?
Yes, and I'll leave that at that.
Okay, this year, we got 40 articles. We believe 31 will be discussed. As we go through it, we'll talk about it. Again, one of the things that people don't understand all the time is the FinCom, and this is the report that we do, is, as I've said many times, I consider it the most influential powerless group of people. Because we get one vote. One out of 200. So any member of Town Meeting has as much authority as the whole FinCom voting for articles.
That's fair, but I haven't served in administrative position as the Police Chief. I think that to distinguish that is FinCom, the subcommittees, and the committees. And as you know, I dealt with subcommittees for 17 years, and the committee for 17 years. You dig a lot deeper, you delve into things. And you're balancing not one interest, but all of the interests.
We try.
And it's...
No, you do.
And it's how do you put together the whole package in the best interest of the taxpayers? Because yes, the Police Department may feel they have a need. Yet over here, the Library may have a contrasting need. And as you know, at least when I sat in that seat, I was well aware of the other departments and would work and step back or step forward depending on the priorities.
Well, the other thing, Tom, is if you look at something like the good Dr. Falvey, he's got 94, 95% of his budget in personnel. As opposed to the school, you know, which has a 60-odd million dollar budget, and 20% of it is expenses. So somebody like Nelson, Falvey, you when you were there, I mean, we used to laugh because we'd get your final report, and the joke was, okay, Tom left six pencils on the budget.
And that was probably one more than I wanted to, but no. But to be, but to be fair too, you know, there were times, as you know, even closing budgets, where, I mean, I can remember the Library had a problem. They were up against it. I helped back funds and saved them to make sure within that which Zach or John Pine at the time could do, you know, so that they would close their budget favorably.
Well, I remember when you and, I can't remember if it was Tuie Rev 1 or Tuie Rev 2, had a need, and one of you gave up money to help the others' budget.
Yeah, Johnny, I helped a few times. Because how does he plan those fires when we were, the fires up in the wooded areas? And my respect for him as a manager is, I can't say enough things. As you know, if anybody managed a budget, John Tuie did. And subsequently, his brother-in-law, Mark. But I, I think we always looked at things, and I think that's what, when I'm getting it, I think that's what FinCom does. You're looking at it from a team perspective of, okay, how do we accomplish as much as we can for each of the department's needs by prioritizing those things that are the most important? And sometimes you have to take a step back and say, I have to wait. And as you know, in John's case, me in the Fire Department, my case, you know, we had capital budgets. We're going to paint this and fix that, and we went and got it done.
Especially Mark's. I mean, what we used to refer to as Tuie Toys. When you're talking about a $650,000 pump or a 1.1 million ladder truck, it really helped us many times when Mark and Bill would come and say, look, I can go another year. Just make sure the money's there next year when I need it. And there was respect there, because he wasn't just me, me, me.
But I think working with your subcommittees, and we're fortunate to have really great people from the Finance Committee. Because, I mean, the Dispatch Center, we built that Dispatch Center.
Yep.
Ultimate cost was, at that time, and it took us three years to build it, it was about 1.5. And much of it was, we cobbled it together through grants and wherever we...
Wherever we can find money.
Save or find a buck. And I give a lot of credit to my friend John Tuie, a great manager. We built a premier dispatch center, joint dispatch center, where Police and Fire...
But both of them though, if you look at Falvey, you look at Nelson, they both learned from their predecessors and seem to be carrying on the tradition. Because you know, when I read about different towns going, let's say, having less than friendly conversations with department heads, you don't see it. I mean, we growl and snarl, yes, in private, you know? But when it comes down to it, we all work together. 40 articles. Article number one is just town reports. Article number two is changing the compensation rate for the salaried employees. I don't think there's any surprise there.
No, it's within reason.
Yeah, it's been 2.5, 3%, continue. Article three is for the full-time elected officers. And that, I think almost every one was 2.9%, except for a couple that had to be adjusted to 4%.
Well, you're dealing with the two full-time employees. So they actually work. That's their living. You know, the town clerk and the highway...
And highway.
And they fell behind. They, there were years that they took zero because they fell into that category. But that's, that's their living. You know, whatever compensation I received, and I'll be, I'll tell you honestly, when I was running for the Board of Selectmen at the time, as it was known, resident town, she sent me a message and said, how much do you get paid? I said, I have no idea. I have no clue. And as you recall, when we were up against it, whether or not those folks who are in Article 2, which is the full-time employees, non-union, I was the advocate to say, I'll give up whatever I was going to receive, but I think everyone else should in that article. So that they do get a cost of living raise. That's their full-time job. That's their living. Ultimately, the Finance Committee, along with Town Meeting, corrected that at the next Town Meeting. And I appreciate them doing that. So I think, as it relates to those two full-time employees, that's what they do for a living. And, you know, should they be compensated as anyone else would? Cost of living, I believe they should.
And I think, I think what's important too, for anybody who's listening and doesn't know the details, you know, what it does for those two associates, or the, I used to call them associates from work. But you know, for this individuals, it's bringing them in line with the new compensation study in Article 2 that we went through. And there's a little bit of a new structure in place. And it's really making sure that they're whole and they're being treated equitably like they were for a different group. So important thing to do.
We go to Article 4. That's our budget. And it's always amazing when people come up and say, how can you put together a budget with only 10 minutes discussion? And it makes you laugh. You know, or the classic line is, boy, nobody ever disagrees at Town Meeting. Said, you should be at the Subcommittee Meetings.
That's what I always said. You did such a great job, there's no need for discussion.
Well, I mean, at the end of the day, there'd be no way of putting together $130 million budget at Town Meeting.
Oh, absolutely. So you're right. I mean, when it's smooth and it looks easy at that meeting, it's because all the hard work was done in the meetings that preceded it. And that's, a lot of people participate.
For many nights.
Yes.
Now, Article 5. Some people are saying, here we go again. We're going to reclassify the employees.
Yeah, so Article 5 is connected to Article 2. You know, and this is really giving them the funds, you know? We talked, I kind of mentioned previously that there was a study done. And it was, I think, a good thing to do. Because, you know, when you do a compensation study or anything like this, and you're going to go look at the structure and the way you pay your teams. You know, when you think about those things, you know, you're really wading into something that's a big deal to everybody's lives. And everybody's, you know, that's their pay. I mean, that affects their lives. And you want, you always want to know why. And is there a problem? And what are we doing here? And really, when you understood what the team was doing, brought in an outside consultant who does this for towns, you know, on a national basis, has a methodology that's employed, or deployed nationally. So there's nothing willy-nilly about it. Very analytical process. And the problem that it solved was it really helped us, you know, identify and fix a lot of things that were handled by exception basis historically. So you know, from a dollar perspective, I think it was about $80,000.
81,000.
So not a big dollar impact to the town, but it really normalized a lot of things and got rid of a lot of exceptions and a lot of things that you'd say are kind of, we could do better, right? So I think it was a good idea to do the study.
Well, I like this study because it took in towns next door to us. Ashland, Franklin, Grafton. You know, the last couple studies that were presented that we weren't comfortable with. Most of the towns were much bigger cities and closer to Boston. It didn't feel like it was apples and apples. But I mean, this is probably due to the fact that we have a real HR director?
I couldn't agree with both of you more. I think that this study is more point on where Article 2, you know, where Article 2 should be. Why should we take, and we have an article coming up, you know, dealing with certain positions. Why should we give the ability to step away from Article 2 a little bit? It's because we want to attract the best. Want to attract the best employees, managers, to manage all of our, I'll say, facilities, departments, at a value that they deserve. But we're attracting that which is going to fit our needs. And Article 2, in my experience, frankly, over many, many years, was simply disastrous. It failed. It failed. The needs of employees, why did we lose some very, very capable employees? We lost them over a couple of thousand dollars. And we spent more simply recruiting.
Recruiting and replacing and training.
To bring people in. I, this study here, I am impressed by it for this reason. It's alive. It's not a study, this is done, etched in stone, and we're all done. Everything I read about this study is, we're going to take a look, six months, a year. We're going to adjust. We're going to be able, and that's where Personnel Board can be helpful. And that's where an HR director can be hugely helpful. Where prior, no. Last study, this is what you have. Do not veer from it.
Two studies ago, I remember disagreeing when they said, we're going to let people hit the cap, and then they're not eligible for a raise again. I said, no, wait a minute. So you got a man or a woman who's 40-some years old, and you're going to tell them that they can't have a raise for the rest of their career? It just didn't seem practical.
And all they saw was the exit sign.
Right.
I'm out of here.
So again, this one feels better. It feels right. But this one's done by a professional HR person. And I think that's the biggest difference.
No question.
It is, and I think Tom's point was a good one, that it's not just a study. It's a living framework that evolves for years. So you know, you don't have to do the study again next year and start from scratch. This thing has a useful life that will, you know, serve us for years to come.
Yeah, and they came out and said, understand that you're going to have to look at this study every year. And you're probably going to adjust it 2, 3% every year. Because that's what every town around us is doing.
And I think it's easy to say, well, if they want to leave, they can leave. The difficulty is, who wants to go?
Right.
Right? So if you look at the marketplace, you know, is this a great place to work? I believe it is. I worked here, I love it, I love the town. I built my house next, down the road from you. I'm not moving. But I, the question is, how do you draw the talent if the talent is going out the door? Word spreads.
Yeah.
You know, we all work in an environment where professionally word spreads. Great place to work, but, and this is the big but.
Now, Article 6 is a combination. We used to have four or five different articles. Jerry Moody got mad at me when I just called them housekeeping. Because they're important articles. You know, allow the Select Board to run the business of the town. Get into legal proceedings. Allow the treasurer to borrow money. I mean, it's all the nuts and bolts. That if you want the car to work, you got to get gasoline. You got to have tires, you know? But instead of spending half an hour going through seven versions, you know, seven articles, Article 6 just pulls it all together.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I mean, I think if you're a Town Meeting member sitting through what could be a long evening, you still have the opportunity to comment on these things and vote on this, you know, as a block, or, you know, obviously, you know, deal with them individually. But I agree, these are ones, when you look at the details, they, it's a good idea to vote them as a block and to move forward a little bit more quickly so that, you know, the Town Meeting members aren't sitting there forever.
And like any budget, any line, you could...
Absolutely.
Ask that Section D be pulled out and discussed independently. You don't have to vote the whole block.
Absolutely. But these are pretty safe.
Yeah. Article 7, self-insurance. People always ask, why are we self-insured?
Well, it's a great thing. I mean, I think, I got the history lesson, I made the notes. It was, I think it was 1990 that we decided to self-insure. And we save a ton of money. I mean, you think about, you know, insurance companies are generally for profit. And you pay the premiums, and then they promise to pay when there's a claim. But when we looked at the math, you know, you look at the premiums versus the claims, and we were a profit center for somebody else. We were sent paying a lot, you know, to the insurance companies and not getting a lot in claims. So what this article really does is just recharge the fund that we have. You know, so sometimes you just need to recharge the account so you can, you know, pay on, you know, some claims. But we're saving a lot of money by doing this, by not paying somebody else to insure.
And we still have an insurance policy.
Sure.
It's not like the Town Hall's going to cave in, blow up, and we have to pay for the whole Town Hall. But I think, I don't know what the number is now. Was it like a quarter million deductible, or?
Right. So there's certain matters that, you know, whether it be the structures or liability, especially law enforcement. So we have a separate policy there, you know, which has millions as far as its value. And you should have it. And you should pay the premiums. But then there are those things, our vehicle bumps into that vehicle. You know, are we going to insure every single vehicle the town owns?
Yeah.
Like we insure our own automobile. I don't own a big dumb truck, so I'm sure it's quite higher, you know, the premiums. I think what they've shown, and exactly what you indicated, is that overall, we save money. So when you balance it down, and you get to brass tacks, the taxpayer is saving money on those types of liabilities. We have our own. We backed a truck plowing snow, and he backs into our own fence post.
Well, we were paying hundreds of thousands of dollars a year.
Or we're going to pay 80 bucks to fix the fence post.
Well, we're paying hundreds of thousands a year in premium. And what we've learned is, over the last 20, 20-some years, we're paying out a lot less than that. Because you can guarantee that if it was going to cost us more, we'd just go back to the old way.
Sure.
But you can't go back to the old way and expect to save money. Because last time I looked, the insurance companies aren't in the business to be philanthropic. They're there to make money. So they'll figure out quickly how to get more from us than we put in.
Yeah. You know, this is the kind of thing that you can afford to do when you have well-managed finances and have some cash on hand. You can save some money because you have the cash, and you can handle these types of things. When, you know, if the town has no money, you can't, you can't do this kind of stuff. And you got to pay the premium, and you actually lose more money by doing that. But this, this is the kind of thing you can do when you have some, you know, well-managed funds.
And so far, so good.
Yeah.
Article 9, this is the one I always love. Because it snowed, we had it removed, now we have to pay for it.
I think that's about it. But I guess the only footnote would be, I believe this is really the only account that we can overspend.
Right.
So it snows, it goes a little bit more than expected, and now we're going to vote on that, and hopefully we'll improve the...
But I think what happens, Grant, is people come back and say, why are you always underfunded?
Why? Because if you increase the amount, you have to fund it the same amount.
You can never go back.
Every year thereafter, you can't go backwards. So it's the only fund you can over-spend. But if you increase the amount, you can never decrease the amount.
Like last year, we spent, what, 280? 200-some thousand dollars out of the 600 we budgeted.
Right.
Okay? This year, we spent 250 more.
Yep.
So we got to put money into the kitty.
And some years, as you said, you don't spend it. So why increase?
And you know, for anybody watching who hasn't paid attention to the budget process too closely, we have to have a balanced budget. So if we were to increase that, that means you have to increase, you know, revenue source. You have to increase taxes to balance that. And to your point, it's a volatile number, so...
Or cut spending.
Or take from somewhere else.
Yeah.
But you know, again, the Police Department is the poster child. You can't take very much. When they were dealing with 4% of discretionary spending...
Sure.
It's not like you can tell an officer, well, yell at them, don't use any kind of force. We're not going to buy you safety equipment. You got to outfit the people, so it costs you a person. This way, luckily, it's like saving money, as long as you're disciplined, you end up okay.
Yep.
Article 9, this is a special article. For people who don't know, the FinCom is always lived with, as long as I've been there, that the spring meeting, since we don't know what our final numbers are, we don't bring capital items unless it's special occurrence. Like a few years ago, Tom, you had a grant that we could get 75% of the lights paid for in the Police Department, but we had to move by July. Well, we're going to move. And in this case, Plains Park, or as old people know, the dump, is settling. That's what happens when you build a recreation facility on top of a dump. As the material deteriorates, it settles. We've got a spot that's kind of low. And you know, the real question is, it was low in the, anybody goes down there, it was low in the fall, it's low in the spring, why are you calling in emergency now? Because apparently, over the winter, it really deteriorated.
It's getting lower.
And lower. And we had it resonate, try and go around the puddle...
Yeah.
And fall on a scooter. So this came up as an emergency. And while they're resurfacing, because again, you got to be careful. You got a barrier, I don't know, 1, 2, 3 feet deep, that you can't penetrate.
Absolutely. This isn't just a little simple regressing when you're on a landfill.
There's a number of factors there. You're dealing with DEP, you're dealing with so many other agencies that could step in, and you're going to spend far more than that.
So this is $90,000, but it includes expanding the walkway. Because the walkway is not strong enough or wide enough for some of the Parks Department trucks. So they're really kind of crunching the walkway every time they bring a truck. This will expand that, and that's all included in 90 grand. Article 10, Juneteenth Day.
Well, Juneteenth, if anybody has missed it, hopefully, nobody has. I mean, it's a, it's a new holiday. It's a federal holiday, a state holiday. You know, obviously marking the end of slavery. It's not, until we review this article with Town Meeting, it's not a Town Holiday. So this, what we do here is try to catch up to the state and the federal holiday. Right thing to do.
Article 11.
We're catching up to history, is what we're doing. So do we have an obligation to do that? And does it give town work as a day off? Well, most, but you know, the public safety personnel, they still work, and we'll compensate them. And that's where, you know, you see a number. But is it right? Of course it is.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Now, we get to Article 11, the zoning article, taking space and putting it under the Conservation Committee. I don't know what more we can say about that.
Other than, how can you say no?
Right, exactly. And this one, since it has no financial implications, the FinCom is referring that to the sponsor. Because it's not something that affects us financially. Article 12, 4.4 million on the Field Pond Pumping Station.
Yeah, you know, so if you think about sewage and water in town, and you think about how, you know, gravity factors in, you realize how hilly it is. And you know, this is over Field Pond area, and there's pumping stations to make sure that you can move all the wastewater. And there's time for, it's time for some maintenance. I think this one's on the older side. But it's easy to take for granted how important these things are to making the town work, and how do you deal with the hills around town to make, in this case, it's really just about sewage. We'll talk about stuff that relates to drinking water later on. But that's really why we have to have these things. If everything was sloped the right way, you wouldn't need all these pumping stations.
If we were in Nebraska, we'd be a lot easier.
Be a lot easier.
But you think about Field Pond, it's, I mean, we think of Bear Hill and Highland Street. I think Highland Street's a little taller elevation-wise than Bear Hill. But Field Pond has got to be one of the lowest spots in town.
Sure, it's down the other side there.
So you got to pump the poop.
On the other side of the hill, yeah.
Yeah, you got to pump the poop all the way uphill to Highland Street so it'll flow downhill into Hope Dale, to where our treatment center is.
The intent is to make sure that, you know, people's interest is served. As you know, we had situations along Highland Street and elsewhere in town where things were backing up, to include downtown, into people's basements, you know, into their businesses. That's, that's what this is to prevent. This is to make sure that your property is protected as best we can by having the best system in place to move the wastewater away from you. You know, the Police Department, we got to cap everything in the basement. The two banks, when they were both open, salon across the street. And I can remember up along Highland Street... And I can remember up along Highland Street, you know, near West Fountain, until they rerouted. A line that, when people suffered some serious, serious consequences and damages that, you know, you, that's the choice.
And realistically.
Either we do it right and we do it efficiently and effectively, or the burden is gonna be borne by people and it shouldn't be.
And the question is, who bears the cost?
Important point.
Sewer pay, rate payers only.
Important point. There was, so we really do run uh the finances of that department separately. So it's not coming from the taxpayer, it's coming from the rate payer. So uh I live in a neighborhood that we have a septic. So I don't pay for sewer, of course, because I don't use that service. So my neighborhood wouldn't pay for this, you know, in our taxes, but people that use it, of course, you would.
Article thirteen, once again zoning article. And that was referred to sponsor.
Sponsor, no financial impact.
Move to fourteen, that's gonna be a big one. Funding countryside.
Countryside, yeah. Uh, want me to go first, Tom?
Oh, please, cause you've been, you, we're both been smack involved in that, but go ahead, I'll, you've been on the financial side of it, so I'm gonna defer initially.
I'll be happy to, you know, I think, you know, start at the beginning and COVID has been really difficult and been tough on that whole industry. It's not um just countryside, our facility, it's really um, yeah, the whole industry has been very difficult, you know. Everybody's seen the news, everybody knows about the struggles around staffing, certainly, you know, untold number of deaths, you know, across the country around COVID in these, in these care facilities. Um, other things that are happening around, you know, space like this, um when you go through COVID and you, and you shut down parts of um the facility. Um, you, you know, you run the staffing problems and then, you know, the, the, the economy, the, the business is changing a little bit, you know, in terms of anybody who's had a knee replacement or hip replacement or a family member that has, you realize you go home a little bit sooner. So that brings you to the, kind of the economics of, of the way our facility works. Um, there's basically two sides to this from a financial perspective. There's the long-term care and there's the short-term care or the rehab. And the rehab, the, the pay rate is about three times higher than if you're in the long term. The short term is where it really gets hit when you're in the middle of a pandemic, because you stop doing the elective surgeries and you don't have as, as much uh of that, you know, that really valuable uh patient flow. Um, so when we had to shut down that short-term side, um it was really hard on the finances of that, of that facility. So, you know, we were running, you know, with expenses that were greater than the revenue. Um, the trend is getting better. I think the, the trustees are working the plan. They've got this, they've done things to get the staffing, you know, back up to where it needs to be. Um, the trend is getting better, but we're still in a position where you look at it and say the expenses are still, you know, greater than the revenue on a monthly basis, although it's getting, getting better. This million dollars is, is really important to continue the operations there. Um, let them continue to work their plan. Um, but this is, this is really important for the families and the, and the residents of that facility, because you know, if, if we were to decide to, the town would decide not to do this, it would be very disruptive to them. The, the facility obviously can't keep going if it, if it runs out of cash. So this is, this is a critical thing to do for the, for all the residents and families.
And this is a valued asset to this community. Um, you know, countryside as we call it now, has been really a mainstay in this community. Um, for many elders, people that, as you said, who even short-term going through rehab. They are a primary resource for rehab. The problem is, was indicated, once we did away with the elective surgeries, because the hospitals had to deal with COVID patients, they were overwhelmed. And you couldn't get in for elective surgeries. Um, that portion of their business just closed. Um, secondarily, the impact on their own employees with COVID. Whether they contracted it, they feared contracting, whatever the case may be. They had difficulties maintaining a solid.
Well, when you look at it, it's three hundred bucks a day to break even. Medicaid care pays Medicaid two hundred and change. Rehab pays six hundred.
Yep.
So unless you have enough rehab patients, you, you can't make up the money.
Absolutely.
But the fundamental question is how much is it worth? Like you said, it's a valuable resource. Well, for somebody who's had their mother in it, and I could drive every night, five minutes, you know, drive a mile to see my mother. Compared to friends of mine who have to drive an hour each way. When I saw the level of care that we're providing compared to other facilities. Uh, it's kind of hard to not wanna keep that.
Anyway, I, I kind of, I think I missed and overlooked an important part of the story. If somebody's watching and saying, why is the town involved in this? Well, that's actually worth talking about. The reason we're involved is because we hold the bond on, on a bunch of renovations there. So the town um has debt about eleven million dollars of principal. If you add in the interest expense, it's about sixteen million dollars. So we are very much in this business. This, this is our facility. So if, if anybody in town didn't know that, I wanted to make sure I cemented that.
And people should know that the bonds, the municipal bonds are very different. Cause if you think of your mortgage, take out a hundred thousand dollar mortgage. A year or two later, you hit the lottery, you walk in, you pay it off, you're done. Not these municipal bonds. If we want to get out, it's gonna cost us sixteen million, whether we pay it all the way out or whether we try and wait till they're callable, it's gonna, we're in the hook for sixteen million dollars.
Because the investors are gonna get their interest one way or the other.
The deal, so we signed that deal, right?
That's the deal. And that's why the bonds are advantageous to the community in the long run. The oth- the other thing with, you know, countryside is, we can't just close the door. Legally, we can't do it.
Oh no, there'd be a wind down period no matter what.
Has to be. So the million dollars is also an opportunity as we've discussed with FinCom. And I mean the select board, along with the staff and, and the uh commissioners from countryside who represent the community, you know, the understanding that, we, you just can't say, you know what, it's not working. Well, you know, we're, we're gonna go bankrupt. It doesn't work that way. So it's, we have, if we're going to wind down, we have to figure out how we're going to wind down.
And that takes time and money.
And, and I'm personally, and I'm, I'm hopeful that we won't, but nevertheless, uh this coverage right here isn't sufficient enough for us to wind down.
The other thing too is, those are Milford people.
Absolutely.
It's people's mothers, grandmothers. When I used to go up there, you know, my Johnny Coffey's mom was there, you know, Barbara Oger's mom was there. It's all people you know. How could you walk in and say, oh, we're not supporting you anymore, take your mother and hit the road? It's not Milford to do that.
And some aren't Milford, but you know, you don't, you don't close the door to someone in need.
Right.
You don't close the door to someone that, you know, they're in the last very, very small chapter of their lives. You know, and, and, and they're in hospice and, you know.
But you're also, Tom, you're hitting on a fundamental point. It's not just my mother that was affected. My daughters wanted to go see their grandma.
It's the whole family.
And they could drive a mile, you know, the whole family, if we all had to drive an hour each way. If the care wasn't at the level that we're getting at countryside, all of us would suffer.
But if we reach a point where we can't sustain, and we've had these discussions and, you know, then it's how can we maintain the operation, whether it be private or otherwise? So we still have that resource available. And that's where this million dollars and the money we've invested, you know, we invested previously. That's, that's where it brings us, is for us to make those decisions as a community. Well, rather than we just phase it out and.
Grant, you've been there when I've said, someday, the residents of Milford are gonna have to make a decision to how much is it worth to have a high-quality countryside in Milford?
The truer words have never been spoken on this. It's just, that's exactly right.
The day may come, as Tom says, that we say, we'll never break even. So how much is it worth to not drive an hour each way to a subpar place for your mother and your father, your grandmother?
Oh, but, but there's always that outside, if, if we can't do it, can someone else do it and do it here and do it in the same quality? And, and those, I want people to know, those are discussions that we've been having to make sure that people appreciate that. It's not just, you know, shut off the lights, lock the door and too bad for all these poor souls. That's just, that's not acceptable.
It's also a balance, because if it's gonna cost you ten million dollars a year, uh it's a whole different outlook. Cause that's on the back of our taxpayers. So it's like you say, right now, this gives us time to keep evaluating.
And it's important to note that we have used some of the federal funds that we received.
Yeah, the last million was all ARPA.
Right, so to, to move us, you know, in the right direction. So it's, you know, COVID impacted on this business severely. And we've used a lot of those COVID funds.
Oh, several million dollars.
To, to bring us forwards that you can look at it in, in a way that you can weigh the facts, you know, they're articulable. You can say, hey, wait a second, here's where we are and here's the direction we may go. And you know, we rely on people that have an expertise. My friend in finance and then we have, you know, pe- people like, you know, Philip Chairman McCully who his background in the medical side of managing, you know, medical people. So I, I, you know, Barbara Oger, there's, there's a number of people that are involved that are well-respected. So no decisions being made in a vacuum. It, it's really weighing things and weighing then the things that you and we talk about of how do we deal with our seniors? How do we deal with people?
How do we deal with our mothers, our fathers, or, or?
Just those in need.
Yeah.
You know, so i- it's really been, I, I'll say, you know, it's not an easy process by any stretch. The discussions have been anything but easy.
It's a difficult subject.
I, I think, yeah.
But it shouldn't be easy when you're spending a million dollars of town money.
And, and it shouldn't be easy because there are so many factors to weigh. And that's where the different voices start to resonate and, and make sense. And I think we learn from each other that, okay, we're willing to go this step, that step, and then we have to make decisions.
And we're gonna see what the patient flow does, right? As the pandemic winds down.
But at the end of the day.
Nevertheless, you, 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 go ahead, the end of the day.
The end of the day, we're hoping that this million will get them over the hump.
Absolutely.
To where they were. But we're not being silly. We're saying there's pretty good odds that they may not make it all the way. So come fall, we better salt away some money, cause they may be coming back to us in the fall, needing a little bit more.
At the end of the day, the million's gonna get you to the hump.
Yep.
Yeah, you're right.
Then we have to figure if we can climb over it, because that's the way it's been.
Article fifteen, the water commissioners have asked, well, somebody else wanna talk on it?
Yeah, I'd be happy to. I mean, it's really a, like a personnel related thing and, you know, new department, um obviously purchased it last year. And what this article is doing is it's making some specific changes that, um, you know, principally what they're doing is people, keeping people's pay the same. You know, and what they need to address is, you know, some on-call status, um, you know, provisions, right? Because the water has to flow twenty-four seven, you know, and, you know, there's also the, um, something for operator license increment. But, you know, these are technicalities that, you know, trying to fit this new department into our pay grade system and preserve uh those employees' pay from what it was before.
And I mean realistically, if you ask somebody to work the weekends.
Yeah.
You gotta pay them.
Right. And if we were paying them before, we should probably keep paying them. So you got a new department, some new requirements. That's what this is about.
And I'm gonna defer because as a young man that works for the water department, um, who has, shares the name, Thomas O'Laughlin, who has a financial interest if he's on call, so I'll, I'll refrain from.
Yeah, we had to be careful of that name, cause many years ago, um, Uncle Tom here came on and said, don't spell it that way. My mother would be less than pleased if you take the O out and put an A.
Yes. Now they, they, I, they, I talked to the doctor's office, they, they take away the apostrophe because of the uh computers and I tell them my grandmother's rolling already. But now, O L A U, uh, yeah, it doesn't go over.
Yeah, I remember there was once in a report, it was AU and Tom came in and said, excuse me, you gotta fix that.
Yeah. My would, my wouldn't like it.
Article nineteen, having a negotiator for union contracts. And this year, it's critical.
This, this is really, it comes from the fact that.
Sixteen.
Um, are you up? So negotiate for the union contract. So the, it stems from the fact that town council served as town council but had an ancillary position in which he was compensated um to serve as the negotiator for union contracts. Um, or labor and decided that he no longer wanted to perform that service. So we're in the midst of bargaining with several unions. So the select would had no other alternative but to reach out. Um, we did select a firm locally from the town of Milis uh who have great experience in municipal union contracts. And the dollar amount is really a place card, because we don't know um what the costs are. We were paying town council twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, hourly, we just not sure where we are. Um, we're pretty much to the end of the major union contracts. So we don't know that we're gonna hit that number, but then, you know, that deals with grievances and other things under the union contracts. Until we can get things settled around the whole issue of town council, so.
But at the end of the day, we need a negotiator.
You most certainly, you need someone to negotiate and you need someone to handle the litigation side of grievances and other labor disputes. Um, unemployment disputes. Um, whatever the case may be, different MCAD, et cetera, et cetera. So these things come up and, you know, I, I would ask that Tom eating beer with us until we settle things as far as uh the town council position.
We have new town council that we're looking for.
We are seeking new town council. Um, Charles Body resigned. I wish him well. Very, very capable, nice person. Um, and i- it was his sole decision, so um I don't know what else to say.
No, no, I, I think people will look and say, a hundred thousand dollars is a huge amount of money, but if not done correctly.
It's not, it's not, it's not when you look at litigation and it's, eh, I'll say to you, a hundred thousand dollars for a business this size is not a lot.
And that's the key, that we never had an HR person and we saw the issues we ran into. Uh, we're a hundred thirty-one million dollar company. And with it comes certain requirements. And one of them, especially if you're dealing with, I mean, most companies have one union to deal with. Here we have four, five, three of them come and do this year and three of the big ones.
Yep, makes sense.
I mean, if you, if you take it out, the average out there now in that marketplace, you know, you're talking two hundred fifty hours of work. For the year for a lawyer.
That doesn't sound like, that doesn't sound like a lot of hours.
It's not a lot of hours, trust me. Um, so and, and I'm talking values here in Milford. So I, do I think we're gonna go to a hundred thousand? I'm hopeful we won't. I don't think we have those kinds of disputes with our unions. I think our relationship is very strong, especially with the major unions.
Well, you think about it, Tom, back years ago, when the whole Romney cuts came in and things happened. I was reading where towns around us, their school union was offering to delay their raises. Which made no sense to me, cause I can't afford to pay a raise today. How am I gonna pay double raise at the end? Our union, our school union came to us and said, look, we will not defer. We'll give up our raise if you keep the money in the school system to protect teachers. We'll give up our raise if you keep the money in the school system to protect teachers. Uh, I would not have believed that a union would offer to give up benefits. But ours did. Now we made up the two, three years later because fair is fair. They helped us when we were hurting. When we had a little extra, we helped them back. So.
That's great.
But it sounds like a lot of money, but it hopefully we'll live well within that. And once we hire new Town Council and assume those same responsibilities. And we'll merge those funds and we'll send on back.
Well, but it's safer to start with it there.
The finance committee, yeah, you you have to. You're not talking major hours.
Right.
So eh, I think it's, I think Mr. Valani, Town Administrator Rick Valani's been. Very conservative with that number.
Okay, number seventeen, zoning bylaw. This was another one that the um FinCom. Referred to sponsor, cause it has to do with the bylaws on supplemental apartments. I don't know if the Select Board took that up at all yet.
Uh, we, we did not. Um, it it was more the planning board can handle it, but. If my understanding is correct, this is, you know, if you have a kitchen downstairs and. A door that closes on your way down the stairs, um, that somehow this isn't something that. We wanna have and, um, we're waiting to see how we're gonna shut down the. Fourteen thousand homes in this community that have a kitchen downstairs.
Well, coming from a Portuguese house.
Precisely.
Um, you always have a kitchen downstairs. We, but you didn't have a door that locked in between them. You had a door that closed. But it wasn't a separate apartment.
The doors to make sure the kids wouldn't fall down the stairs.
So this is an interesting one because, you know, um, good friends of ours are just renovating a house and sure enough, there's two kitchens. And I said, why? They said, it's a Portuguese house. You always have two kitchens. Okay. And then they're not renting it out or putting a second family in there. It's their mom and their dad. So.
So you can do an in-law apartment, by the way. So I could do an in-law in that same house, but it's not considered. A supplemental apartment as far as I've been told.
Well, it's like having extra bedrooms. There's a difference between having a door on a bedroom and having a lock. With the key on a door on a bedroom.
And I don't wanna pick just on my Portuguese friends, but a lot of my Italian friends have the two kitchens too.
Tom.
The Irish, we couldn't afford the second stove, so we never had it, Al, but it's, no. So, no, but you know what, eh, I, that one confuses me and.
Well, that's, that's why we refer to sponsor.
Yeah, and I made some phone calls and asked some people some questions and I go back to where I was. How many homes in this community, how many homes in this region? Um, are we gonna think are in violation? I mean, you're not going back, you know, ex post facto, right? But nevertheless.
No, but I think there's.
All of my neighbors. I mean, if my in-laws, because they can't handle stairs and take it from someone that doesn't like stairs anymore. Um. If they're gonna live on the lower floor, yet they're part of the household. How's that different than an in-law suite or?
And and to me, it's more the feeling of independence. A lot of the grandparents and all. Having the kitchen, they feel like they have their own place. They don't have to go up those stairs into the main house all the time. But that's different than putting a lock on a door and renting it.
I agree. But as important, it's also that sense of, it's still that sense of family. I still belong. This is my family. My support is here. Especially if you're dealing with people that are facing disabilities, et cetera, versus isolating. You have to go live here. When they could live where they have the support systems, that they thrive better. You know, so I, I'm confused by it and that's my take, uh, and I'm willing to learn more.
Well, that's why the FinCom said prefer to sponsor. And at this point, we're gonna take a short break. Uh, we've gone fifty-eight minutes, amazing as it is, and we're on Article eighteen. We'll come back in a minute or two. Thanks for holding on.